Meeting of the Depot Bay Harbor Commission is now in session. You call the roll please, Carla.
Sure.
Erright. Nick. Next here.
Ted, can you hear us?
You're muted or something, Ted.
Turn your uh, turn your speaker on.
That's Randy Davis.
There we go, now can you hear me?
Yeah.
Zimmerman.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Martin, here, we have a four.
Okay. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, moving on. Any correspondence? I didn't see any in the packet. Alright, we need to approve the minutes of the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four and March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four meeting. Has everybody had a chance to read them, I hope?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, do we have?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as.
February, March?
February, March.
Second of all, the one?
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve the minutes of the February twenty eighth and March twenty seventh meeting. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have any public input? Either on screen or... Or here, okay? Hearing none. Moving on to liaison office report. Now, I got, uh, I went for the meeting, the first meeting today. And uh, we, 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 we didn't have anything that uh... Apply to the harbor at all. So I had for the first meeting.
I went to the second meeting. And there was really nothing that had anything to do with the harbor on their agenda, but I just got up to the box and told them what we were doing. And said that we were working on a number of things. Roy made a list of all this going on while we were getting ready for Memorial Day weekend. And the only thing that, question that was presented to me was why we were spending so much money on a sanitation system at the fuel dock when we never do it? And I just basically said without knowing for certain, I think we have to have one.
Um, just that during his update.
Paul uh, injected some good news that they also rebuild those units instead of soaking it for old brand new. So it was mine if you stayed there. And that appeased right the... But that I uh, sat back down. And I told him our meeting was now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Harbor Master, your board.
Alright, um, we've been doing maintenance down in the harbor. Uh, first off, uh, if you haven't met Brian, he's on my notes, this is Brian Ruth, he is our seasonal down in the harbor. So we are open seven days a week, we're fueling now, um... Well, Brian.
So you will change that, um, you know, it will be the word that says closed holidays?
Uh, well, we were closed this last holiday, um, I think holidays are...
Still closed on holidays.
We're still doing the closed on holidays unless we decide to open it, but as of right now, we're still letting us have the holidays off also. Um, because usually it's just the one day out of the week.
So seven days a week, five hundred hours.
Well, seven days a week, it's just seven days a week, yeah, and Roy wanted to change that.
Yeah.
Seven days a week except holidays.
And I have it on the board down there, closed holidays. On the, on the fuel bunker.
You can see it on the internet. I'm, 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 I'm just gonna say, um, and I remember my life or plans, but, I mean, the closed could be our season days.
I agree, and I think that's something we need to talk about is during the height of the season. That's not imposed.
I probably hate to see it closed.
Yeah, I, to go one more, I think Fourth of July and Labor Day are two days that we need to have fuel available. And that's busy. All the other holidays, I don't think.
Yeah, maybe, I would agree.
So we'll just make sure that those are covered.
Thank you.
How much of daytime for those, I mean, what's?
The regular hours.
Regular hours is fine?
Yeah.
And the regular hours are?
Uh, one at three thirty.
At three thirty, what time?
One at three thirty, no matter what the time.
Has that been enough time?
It seems like some really short months.
It is.
No problem, I don't.
Yeah, we used to.
Well, usually longer.
The, we put it at three thirty because people, we were wine spreading it out of there by four, and people are always looking over at four and then saying later, later, wait. So this is, if somebody is already there, we're still gonna fill up. We aren't gonna turn people away if they're already in lobby.
I, I just, I'd, I'd really like to see you take a look at it for summer hours, that's not for a charter boat, that's not gonna work.
I, I'm, I haven't, I am worried about that too, but that was a conversation we were gonna have separately.
Okay.
We'll, we'll investigate that. Okay, thank you.
Keep us as close to.
Do you want the winters and winter, is how the season's already dead, I never heard of this.
Yes, it started, but, but I mean, the reality is...
We can check in our sales sheets and see what, if you don't, if you don't pay your boat in until four o'clock or so and you need your fuel, I mean, you're stuck. I mean, hopefully they plan, but as busy as that you guys are, I, I, I can't imagine you fuel up at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Can I speak a little bit? So I think part of that also was brought up in the past because they'd be waiting there for hours and then nobody even, they gone out. Then boom, somebody shows up at the last minute or they call, I need somebody to get me fuel. And I think that's kind of where things kind of.
Well, could we just adjust it down then from two to five or, you know, whatever it is, I mean, I don't. I would defer to when the boat captains need it the most.
Yeah.
What?
During the summer season, during the season, I, I think we wanna try to accommodate that, but what does that look like? Before it's been all night day, and it is a waste of fat time to sit down there and go waste some fuel.
So you can say that they don't.
But, right, so when is the best time?
Well, during tuna season.
Sure.
Gotta be long.
Well, can, where, you guys know, let's look at what the best, the time we should make.
Yeah, why don't you guys work that and then?
Yeah, we can look at the sales sheet, the summer last year and.
You can break in. Yeah, what year's in term?
The sales, I don't think we actually had, um, much after hour fueling.
There wasn't, right?
I don't remember saying it. Whatever we were doing last year, it seemed to work.
Well, yeah, nobody wanna pay fifty dollars, so.
But they made it work, I believe, I mean, that's what I'm saying is.
I'm just saying, let's talk, and let's, let's do a consensus from the people that buy our fuel, the charter boat, you know, what, what's gonna work best for them?
Because more and more of them are buying their own fuel tanks and trailers.
There is going to be some changes related to that coming up very soon. It will be permitted, but permitted.
Okay.
At a cost, right?
Okay.
Sorry.
We done our fuel now, for the moment?
I don't know.
Roy, go ahead and do that.
Okay, um, the new path going down the hill next to dockside, that has been completed. They put in a very nice walkway down there, handrail, we put uh, small silver lights on the handrails also.
Yeah, looks beautiful.
It's great.
I walked, I walked up at the.
You guys all happy with it? Really nice.
I walked up with Wendy.
Really, it turned out to be really nice.
It's really nice.
Glad to have someone to hang on to.
Where's that railing, yeah.
Yeah, well, I didn't think it was supposed to be that steep.
Yeah, on that picture right there, but.
It's better than it was.
Yes.
This is, this is really nice.
But with the railing and by the hole where they did around the back door.
I have to check. Yeah, really. I was sitting there thinking, but it's taken forever and thinking that it really milks the city, it's been nice.
It's getting through to them.
We, we hired, uh, Rock Street for escaping to do that, the walkway, and then we hired this gentleman, does he have a company name, his name is Jerry?
Uh, I can't think of the name yet, I'm talking.
It turned out to be.
So, grab Steve Jerry on the way.
Can you back up to the first item? If you didn't have a shirt.
Oh, uh, painting the electrical shack down there, painting the screens down at the, the fish lane station down here. Getting them spruce up and looking nice for the season down there, so. And trying to seal up some of those grates since they're getting a little bit tuckered out by the weather conditions, so. Trying to make them last as long as we can.
Okay, good.
Um, dock one cleats, they are at the fabric, should be at the fabricage, he should be working on them, I was gonna give him a call probably tomorrow and see what the status is, because that was to replace all of those cleats on dock one that are still the aluminum ones. A good portion of those have been replaced already with stainless steel, and we're gonna continue that project. So when it's time to put the charter boats on there, we don't have to worry about those aluminum cleats failing, which some of them have done in the past.
Yeah, I'm floating proof.
Do you have one to break off also?
Oh, Mary, a couple years ago, geez.
Oh. Tony still started the process down there, I think yours are all replaced now.
Oh yeah, no, they're fine now.
Yeah. So, we are, I ordered those and the order's been put in, so he should be getting those finished up here hopefully sooner than later. And then we have that on our, our to do list to mount those up, the, up and down the dock. I'm not gonna put any of these on the finger docks because those aluminum ones are fine for the smaller boats. But for the war chartered, definitely wanna have these on there. And we'll be putting the trex decking as a spacer down like we've been doing in the past. Because the way they had it before was they just uh, drilled holes into the deck, or excuse me, into the frame, and they didn't cut away the plastic decking, so there's enough room for it to wiggle also. So this way we can tighten it down and not have a, basically a, a gap between the, the footprint of the cleat and where it should be tightened down to, so. Trying to make that dock better. And then we got Brian here, so.
Uh, before you move on, why, why don't you just come a little bit back yourself, because you have harbors here, port experience, don't you?
Yeah. Oh geez, way back when, I worked for the city of Santa Barbara on the wharf, um, as a diver, uh, but you got to wear a lot of different hats. This is a real big plank kind of wharf, I mean, uh, maybe like four by sixteen planks. And uh, but, you know, the whole thing was similar to here, it's a waterfront apartment. And they had an arena, uh, as well, big, uh, same kind of things going on, changing out the slopes and docks. And, and that was one of my favorite jobs. And it led to, it led to different jobs, but uh, you know, uh... Thirty-seven, thirty-eight years later, here I am working for a city again. And uh, yeah, but I, I've worked for oil field diving and salvage and in movies, and then most recently, uh... I sold wine for tenders. I, I didn't like, I didn't like being a grownup, so uh, here, here I am, I uh, I came to the waste plant, I found a lot of people.
I'm a lot of things at the waste.
And he's, he's been doing very well.
You all done, Roy?
I'm all done.
Okay, Kim, you wanna say your quote again?
Uh, not really, I'm maintaining stuff for the budget stuff.
Okay, so we'll, we'll wait for that, that's fine, I noticed on the uh... What do you call, yeah, the payment on the uh, kiosk.
Kiosk?
Yeah. Um, it's a pretty good money and.
So, yeah, so, so you looked at our income. So the report that I had a review was also like fiscal year to date includes, right? So is that for my? Oh, you can start that off. Oh, okay, well, I, I can tell you from the budget standpoint, um, launch fees are up over a thousand, almost fifteen hundred over last year. Yeah, so, and uh, electricity surcharge, same, same fuel cells, we're still, I have my CPA, we hire CPAs, we hire a CPA. And one of the first things she sent me gave her was the, the fuel spreadsheet to try to simplify and clear this process up because it's nuts.
Right now, let's move on to unfinished business and we'll get into.
Oh, sorry.
Harbor fund. Question.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, well, that's what I say, that's, I'm, I'm moving agenda after that, too.
Should, should I talk about it or not?
Carry on.
Okay, thank you, my pleasure.
We have learned new wisdom.
So, um, mortgage reserve has gone, you know what, hang on a second, I'm looking at the wrong thing. So we uh, budgeted fifty-two thousand for the launch fees and as of the end of April, we were at eighteen thousand. So we're actually at three thousand over our launch fees from last year.
Wow.
I know, that's pretty good. So for um, unreserved mortgage, we're up four thousand. For reserved mortgage, I budgeted seventy thousand, we're at a hundred and twelve.
But those are all due to increases.
It's due increases, but not the launch fees. So that's, that's pretty good.
Well, I think, I think enforcement has helped and we ought to, telling them that they're gonna go to jail. It's really working.
Yes, get a ticket, right? So, um, the, more used, the request that we have like the A D, we still put that in there, that was in last year's budget. So we need to really try to accomplish it this, this is coming or it won't ever come here again, so we need to make sure we get it done. But um, he'd also asked for, you guys had approved the weld over feed, I included that, um, the other things he.
How come, excuse me, how come that's cost uh, eight thousand dollars less than the eighty B?
Uh, that's the expenses, did you, that was the cost you gave me on those.
How much do we have for the A D?
Ten.
Ten thousand.
That's correct.
I have no idea what those cost, I don't remember.
I have one where it must have given that average point four, so. I have no idea, we can, we can look at that, I don't really know how to find those yet. Would you uh, look up an A D? But I know you gave me the welder with T. Um, what else we got up here? Uh... The facilities improvement projects, the little station pump replacement, um, the ability to go launch, parking lot, seal coat. Now, what I did with that one is I took seventy percent of that under TRT. So what you're seeing there is only thirty percent, okay? Um, the fuel bumper fence replacement, that's something that is also they wanted to do this year. Some of the other things, like they didn't want us to skip this year and a couple of these other things. We have a generator in there, but we were able to get a, uh, resident donated a decent generator. So that, is that, is that down there in the office, that was?
Well, it's down there, yeah.
Okay. Um... Other things came in under, like, other things like sea wall crack repair and things like that, they're under harbor maintenance, um...
But that's, that's the vertical crack.
That's, that's true, you know, that does remind me, we need to put something in there for what it's, where it's gonna look like to do the new crack, the new. But I'm reaching out to, I, I reached out, I knew them, and I have to call out with their, our coastal program manager is Sam Lynch now, not for experience anymore. So I reached out to her to try to talk to her about some of these things and say, okay, well, let's, what, what do you do? We're gonna teach you halfway what you want, what we need from you, because it is your city ball, so.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I would think that.
As closely as they could with the last year, you know, they're.
But I would think that they would have to be, they, they should be paying for that and not the city.
And I think. Well, I know that.
But not, not, the vertical crack is just a fill plate and that stuff is expensive and with the gray.
Brady's worried about just filling it though. He's worried about, what they said was just, what he said, but he's worried about that.
But he, he. He had special stuff, and it's expensive, Greg said it was expensive. But it's good for that stuff, because that crack was in a lot of, I think.
More in some places.
Actually, Brady thinks he goes to more, I think.
Okay, he goes to more, because when we had a Army Corps come down there, gosh, a year and a half ago or so.
What that?
Uh, put it on the boat, and we're using a measuring tape or a ruler, and a lot of times they were not hitting the back of that crack with that ruler, the, and that stick they were shoving in there. So, a foot, oh, it's.
Yeah, Brady, Brady's, last time we talked about it, he said, yeah, they want us to do it naysense, just put this stuff in, he's worried about it, he wants this not to happen.
Well, let's get back with him and say, hey.
That's what I'm gonna do with Sam, coastal program.
Yeah, Sam.
We need something structural, not just a covering band-aid, in my opinion, but this is also, except Army Corps wall.
Yes, yeah. Another thing though about this fuel bumper fence? Since that other big crack needs to be fixed, do we run weight on the fence or?
Um, that fence is gonna fall over one way or the other. Uh, we've got the Jerry guy who did the handrail, he's doing the fence over at Waste Art right now, and he's scheduled to be down there when he's available to work on that fence too. And this is just the one around the, the fuel bunker, this is not along the sea wall.
No, no, no.
Well, and just remember though.
But that's what, that's what that vertical crack is.
The Oregon State Marine Board we have is, most of that money, that eight thousand dollars is general port around the harbor. That would cover a good part of that fence and stuff like that, so there, there are the extra funds that I have.
I thought it was any same to buy better?
No, I did not, no, I didn't. No, only twelve hundred is for the same, so.
Okay.
The rest of the eight thousand is other stuff.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, um, parking lots, all that stuff. So I think if we say, oh, we're gonna spend it on this because the thing's about to fall over, it probably be fine. Um, the other things I did was like, for example, the wood mark of Robertson Restrooms, the leases, I made them under TRT. So we pay, because those are primarily used by tourists, visitors to the city, so.
Oh, sorry.
That makes, that makes sense.
Maybe, tourism, uh, transient rent tax.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
So, um, so the, what I did put in here, even though I could make a case for all of it, I just left like supplies in this harbor. And let's see. I think that was pretty much it.
Has the budget been approved?
No. They, uh, council had a deeper dive into it last night, or not council budget committee, so, uh, so it's not. It's, we're gonna have another meeting on the eighteenth, and I think we're gonna charter bottom, I think.
Well, I hope so.
They, they understand they need to do, I just wanted to tell you real quick, the other things that we put in transient rent tax, this is all from a, um, then those by a previous attorney. Um, I put, um... The kiosk, that, the total cost of the annual cost of the kiosks is down there. Um... We are probably going to have the Oregon Department of Revenue start handling our, um, compliance work or some sort of that's there. But related to the har, harbor, um... The boat launch, I said that, the park bridges, a couple other, other lease expenses. So that's really what we pulled out, about ten thousand, every day for our expenses.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Awesome.
Alright. Anything else on harbor fund? Okay, next, under unfinished business is a dock two to four replacement project, uh... In the Advanced American Construction Baseline Schedule. Jack and Ted, who were, who were not here for the five o'clock meeting that we had with the, where we briefed the... Mortgage holders on status. And basically, nothing has really changed. Uh, there is a, is that a, a, a upgraded sheet that you put on or the explanation, is that on the, online?
That was emailed to the membership, and then it'll get posted tomorrow, um, after the meeting.
Okay. Alright, so, Ted, you and Jack, you should have the uh, email copy of the, what was presented today. And we had very few mortgage holders here, but, um... Had a good briefing from, from Roy and the rest of the city staff, and uh, there weren't many questions. And I, at least those that are here are aware of the fact that we're gonna replace the docks and that's got the priority. So it was a good meeting. Either of you two have any questions on?
Oh, I do. Uh, if this is public comment time.
Well, it isn't, but you're talking about the, about the dock replacement?
Yes.
Alright.
I apologize for not being here five, all I saw was, online was the six o'clock meeting. So, uh, just make my comments brief here. Uh, I was told that, uh, we're, uh, mandated to vacate about October first, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is, is there any wiggle room in that? I understand the people that were moored here all year last year are able to stay. Uh, in my particular case, I usually vacate sometime between October fifteenth and November first. So it doesn't impact me a lot, except if I decide to stay, leave the boat at the coast and stuff, I have to go down to South Beach and rent a slip at considerable cost, so, uh, I'm asking, is there any wiggle room in that?
Last year, were you moored year round or how did you?
I, I was an annual mortgage holder last year, yes.
Did you pull your boat last year?
Yes, around November first.
What's as a vote?
Uh, twenty eighth.
Well, the decision was that the boats had to be out by the first morning for this, for this coming year.
So how much wiggle room are you looking for?
I'm sorry, what's that?
How much wiggle room?
Oh, uh, let's say October twentieth. I, I just happen to have some, in my particular case, I happen to have some out of town things that I, I can't be here to pull the boat and do all the necessary things until about that time, unless I pull it real early, like September first.
Okay, I would suggest that you get with Roy and city staff and see if there's something that can be worked out. And if it can't, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to move it up, well, okay?
Okay, uh, I would ask this then. It's my understanding there is no, uh, proration of the mortgage fee?
It is correct.
Okay. Are, is the, is the port governed under, uh, ORS ninety or ORS four fifty-six?
First of all, this is not a port, this is a harbor.
Right.
So it's governed by the rules of the state.
And there is no Oregon state statutes that apply?
No, not, not, not at this level.
We're not, we're not.
At what level?
Yeah, because we're not a, we're not a state.
Well, you, you're a marina, and, and there, there are statutes that govern marinas. Uh, if you're not familiar with them, maybe you should talk to your city attorney.
Uh, so what particular statute and requirement are you referring to?
Uh, four fifty-six and ninety.
Okay, related to?
I'm sorry?
Related to what?
Oh, marinas and floating home statutes.
Floating homes?
Marinas and floating home statutes.
Okay, so what was your question?
Okay. If you're governed by those, I don't know if you are or not, and if you're governed by those, then it's my understanding that it's illegal to not prorate when there's no habitability. And first, let me say, I wouldn't make a big deal of this even if you were governed. Because I appreciate Depot Bay, you have great, great people working for you, Roy's a great guy, he, he works with everybody. However, here's my thing. If this is just a pompous decision from the commission that you move out, you take it and leave it, then I have a problem with it. Then I'd like to know, is there a statute that you're not aware of that maybe we should look at?
Okay, first of all. Okay, first of all, uh, the commission does not make the rules, the city council makes the rules. We are advisory toward the, to the city council. So I would suggest that you, if you would, put down in writing your concerns, send them to, uh, Kim, who's the city recorder. And then it'll have, it may have to go before city council, but it's, this is not the.
Okay.
The group that would handle that particular thing, but, um. Anyhow, I think I've said enough of that.
And if it's related to the floating homes, um, that wouldn't have bothered us, because we don't have to.
Well, it, it is marina and floating home.
I, I realize that, and I'm looking at this right now, it says the landowner requires tenant and marina to move the tenant's floating home to the section. So just send me exactly what you're looking at and I'll be able to take it back.
Okay, again, I appreciate Depot Bay, I've been here for, since the seventies. However, I have, uh, being on the city council and the marina board in Camas, Washington. I have seen some ill-advised decisions made, sometimes by the port commissioners, that they have not consulted attorneys with. And if I have to move out, that's great, I won't make a big deal out of it, but I don't appreciate just not any consideration at all. I am an annual mortgage holder, I don't, I don't care if I have to move out for six months, but I appreciate you working with me a little bit.
Alright, so you, you gotta figure out now what, what the city has told you. And what we, as, as a commissioners, uh, you know, we, we cannot resolve your problem with the city.
Understood, thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Okay.
Excuse me, just, just for the purpose of the record, could you please state your first and last name?
Steve Johnson.
Thank you.
There's a gentleman online who would like to speak, if he would like to unmute, it's about the same, uh, the, the dock project.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me? This is Randy Davis.
Yeah, we can hear you, can you hear us?
Okay, I had a similar comment to the gentleman that spoke before and that was just the fairness of being forced to vacate, uh, October first. There's still a fair amount of fishable season in October and November that we do enjoy and then, uh, we're still paying for a five percent increase this year plus the full year, you know, slip rental, um, and only able to use it for approximately half the year. Uh, that is if the project ends on time, so the current concern is just there, he's not alone in that, uh, fairness. And, uh, it sounds like we need to take that up with city council, so we'll be so advised.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware that we have a certain window to do in-water work. You can only do in-water work from the end of October to what the middle of February, fifteenth of February. So we're on a really tight, tight range.
Which is that?
That, that's, that's, that's what we're working with.
If it comes down to that.
We lose funding, we lose our permitting.
That's, that's, yeah, that's, that's.
All of that, or whatever timeline we have, I just.
Understand.
If I end up having to go down to South Beach and spend three hundred and fifty dollars for the month down there, I just think it's fair to have some sort of consideration.
Alright, okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Okay, and, uh. Okay, and, uh, you on the, uh, online on Zoom, you, you got the way to get a hold, get a hold of the city and then, uh, go over there, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good, thank you, gentlemen, um. Alright, moving on to new business, um, first item on the agenda is a seawall crack near the fuel storage tank. And, uh, we've kinda got an update in that we're waiting to hear back from Sam, who stayed.
I'm waiting to, I have, getting, letting her in the loop, it's all about what she knows and doesn't know, so.
Okay.
The, the, the one fellow that you took in the boat, Roy, that's come down a couple times, yeah, he's, he's, he's based out of Portland.
Yeah.
He's the guy in, you know.
He's been informed, but he hasn't spoken.
And he is the one who usually does the surveying.
Yeah, he does the mission. That coastal program had a different viewpoint on seeing whether or not it becomes a project and, and so, so. I wanna talk about it, I think, too, by the way.
Okay, good. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, mortgage license agreement and a couple out of it, uh. Excuse me, has gone out to all mortgage holders, mortgage holders and, uh. We've had some comments already here today, but, uh, any other feedback that you received?
Uh, well, it will be a challenge getting those, uh, initial pages returned. So far, I've only had two, uh, the five that have come in and have actually returned with the, um, initial pages for the rules and rates that I'll be following up with them to get the, so that we have a complete, um, mortgage license.
How many letters were sent?
Um, to all the mortgage holders and every single one of the mortgage holders.
Would that be like, would that be like thirty?
Seventy.
Seventy?
Seventy, okay, this kind of gives me an idea of what percentage wise what we're working on, so.
Yeah.
So you, you figure about seventy, and how many did we get back? Signed?
Well, several, not many, but we haven't actually got very many returned. I've had several people wanting to pay where had indicated that, uh, we'll actually be invoicing them in June, they won't be paying until the, say deadlines in July, but.
They're coming, um.
Yeah, so some of that one, I'm sure they'll turn them in then.
They don't know what R S V P is. Okay. Were you laughing?
I know, I thought it was pretty.
Well, of all kinds of information.
It wasn't.
Yeah, good luck with that.
But, yeah.
Okay, moving on to item three under new business, which is dock two to four replacement project meeting comments. Does anybody in the harbor commission have any additional comments about the meeting we just had a phone call? Hearing none?
I'm just excited that it's gonna happen, this is really exciting time for people there to get new docks.
Just for the benefit of the people that have a concern, we're not trying to be hard-nosed or anything, but we, we have this timeline even though it's the worst of times, sometimes with the weather, but we can stand to lose our funding and stuff if we don't follow the timeline, so we're kinda stuck.
Understand, sir, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one question to that, online, yeah, so. I was not clear what were the guidelines of who actually qualifies as wintering over. Um, I took my boat out personally around the fifteenth of December last year, so, you know, it was unclear. I did not see the guidelines of what qualified for those who wintered over. I know that wasn't wintering over, but I, I didn't see a date that was defining that.
Well, the way we decided on this was the vessels that were in the water, um, the entire winter season. So it was taken into consideration, uh, basically boats that cannot be taken out of the water. Uh, you've got a trailer that helps us a lot because we only have a so, a very fine amount of space. We have docks one and two to put all the boats that are not physically able to be put onto a trailer or be taken out of the, of the wa, of deep wave, basically. So that's how that was decided.
That makes sense, Roy, thank you.
Can I just make one more comment? Um, the city recorder is going to contact, um, South Beach Marina and, uh, the Toledo, um. Port of Toledo and see if they might do any reduction, um, in mortgage for boats that are coming down from here because it's a hardship here and, and. I would think that they might be open to us, so.
I would be surprised if they.
So we would go ahead and let people know if we find, if we can make any kind of deals with them.
Well, thank you, that's appreciated, I, I'll make every effort to get my boat out by October first.
I understand.
Appreciate it, we understand the concerns, yeah. Alright, moving on to item J, commissioners' comments. Chad, you got any comments?
Um, well, I'm hoping the new C P A, um, can produce a profit and loss and a balance sheet for us, for the harbor.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, city's working on it.
Okay, perfect.
Jack, anything?
I'm all ears, sir.
Okay.
Just one, uh, one note that I made that is gonna be a big, big problem, it has been just in the last couple of months, even port of busy season, these. The guides that are taking these charterers, um, their customers are taking up all of the parking down at the park and then whatever they, it's gonna, it's gonna be an issue.
It's just more and more and more.
And it's just, the last time that, the, the, we had this nice stretch of weather and the parks was full of trailers and they're all hitting the kiosks pretty good, uh, but, uh, yeah, they're, they're not, they're not doing us any favor with the parking situation at all.
Uh, I have a couple of questions, I don't know when's the right time to ask regarding the parking and such.
Well, I'd like to talk about this issue for a minute.
Hold on, scroll back up, go ahead, we're going.
Just a, about enforcement of the guides themselves, who has a business license? Are they, how do we know who has them and?
We, um, we, we know when we get told, we, who has them, um, we do have people who let us know if they see what might be a new guide service. Uh, when I'm driving through, I, I will often make a note of somebody's guide service if they got it on the boat or the truck and I'll come back and ask if they have a license.
Where are they supposed to have the sticker on it?
Um, they're supposed to have business license, they don't have standard, but.
They buy Oregon State Marine Board, yes.
If they, if they buy a launch pass, and some of them are buying a launch pass, so they're getting the launch pass for a hundred dollars.
You're talking to your.
As notice, they're getting a launch pass.
Yeah, so I'm talking about enforcing the business license end of it, and that's where maybe the parking enforcement can, can, um, get.
Yep.
They, since there's a requirement to post a business license on anything, they, there's no way for him, our deputy, to know until he makes a list of them, we ask him to do that, or I do.
I can give you a list.
You can give, give me a list.
I have a question.
I would be happy to take this, but, and then we'll verify them, and if they don't, Diane, there's no problem, we'll ban them.
How, how, but how can we change that, that, that there is no regulation for them? I mean, they should have a sticker that identifies them as a guy that has a city license, other city people there.
You would want to make some kind of recommendation on the process change, in which you would want to avoid, you know, work with us to the city council.
Because.
They definitely have an interest in this.
As Booner said, it, this is a hot spot for our mission.
I would also increase it from what?
Well, and it, and as a stat, a stat, we've, we've talked about, um, increasing a business license for that type of.
That type of.
Business life, actually looking at all the business licenses and rather than having to be based on number of employees, it would be more looking at, like a lot of cities do, which is more on the type of business. And a business such as the guide service who is basically utilizing our facility to do business.
They tie up to fish cleaning, they use their bathroom, they use.
Exactly, they're not, their business license is the state price, you know, cheap.
Yeah.
They're using our facility for commercial enterprise.
And they're not scared of me anymore, they're like, we won't try to chase me. So.
You need a bigger stick.
Yeah.
But yeah, if, if you have a, if you have a list of names that we've written down, uh, if you could send that to accounting.
You wanna, you wanna name, just name our license plate number.
Either way.
Uh, we got our business license number?
Well, we can look it up through the state marine, although we don't have a name, I can pray that for, but definitely, uh, then Diane can check and see if she shows it.
I, and I, I, I would like to pursue this, I, I've gone down.
We have gotten quite a few.
Yeah, I've gone down and I said, hey, if someone's on a, do you move?
So what a help of a recommendation came from this commission as far as, and I, so I'd like to put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's good to be here.
It'll be.
Can I add to that?
Say again?
Sorry, can I add to that?
Who's this?
Jack?
Oh, yeah, hi, go ahead.
I thought I fell asleep, didn't you? Um, no, it has become quite the conundrum down there, and my hat's off to the charter boat operators making a living with the increased fuel costs and dock costs and everything else, just increased cost of living, but, uh, the new condos going in down the street, I, I stopped for the dump truck for a half hour, I think it was Friday. Uh, not their fault, they're just trying to get some, uh, asphalt out of the way. And then, uh, I have nothing with the guys, I would estimate, since I'm there a lot, maybe forty or fifty operating out of Depot now, I've never seen it before, that amount of guide boats. And then add the three or four cars sometimes each bring for their passengers down there sitting in the trailer spots. My hat's off to Roy, I know there's no enforcement yet, I talked to the resident deputy, super nice guy, and I understand his job, but there's been no tickets or no real enforcement, and the kiosk is kind of a, you know, do as you should, do the right thing. I, I pay my yearly fee, I got my little sticker on my boat trailer, which is great, but it is, it is quite the dilemma, unfortunately, and, um, and it does, you know, now with that, I'm guessing there'll be no parking down the road at all because that's getting, with the ditch coming in and the new condos, so. Yeah, it's gonna be a bone of contention, I think, in our future that we should at least look at and try to find a feasible way to deal with it.
Someone asked if we'd done on Shell Avenue either way, because that Shell Avenue is actually no parking, has been both sides for a long time. If it's.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
That needs to be addressed, what, what the council wants, that's a little plan. So if the harbor commission even has a recommendation related to one side, both side, what do you do? Um, the townhomes that are there that face that, they only have six spots, and they're only required by, that has six spots. So they have two cars, they'll end up on the street.
And they can't park.
Can't park on the street.
Yeah, and now they can't park on the street, then we go, put a dumpster there, yeah.
Um, another, okay, the only comment I have, and I've talked to Roy about this, is that I had one of the guide boats in the harbor parking lot, parked truck, trailer and boat while they were getting their fish cleaned outside dockside. Talked to Roy about this, and so that's, yeah, and so that's another, since we're talking with this whole thing, maybe we oughta cover a whole lot of stuff in this recommendation, city council.
Roy can share with you a little fix we thought of.
For that one, because we do have the two, three signs down though that says, you know, one says no trailers, you can go, R V turn around beyond this point.
No trailers.
Then the other two say, no trailers down here beyond this point. Uh, Kim got us some, uh, solar L E D tape, so we're gonna put that around the sign, it has a little solar panel on it, so it'll start hopefully flashing, flashing little lights around this, so it can catch their eyes, someone says, oh, I didn't see the sign, I thought, oh, you're taking over. Yeah.
Until they hit a few more.
Roy says he had one or told, he has told people, I mean, that's what they say, I haven't seen the sign, he's like, sorry.
We look past two of them, they're on your side of the road too, so.
So.
And I've talked to charter boat, charter boat, uh, charter bus drivers, I mean, doing the same thing, and I'll stop them and say, you realize that this was a bad idea, right?
He said he had one doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that corner, you're not gonna get a bus driver.
So if you come down here and this park house toll, you'd still be down here, we, you know, we'd get out of here, so. I've, I've passed the word when they come down there, but yeah, we're gonna try to put a, a light on that sign or a flashing light on that.
Sounds, sounds good.
It's not gonna be a, you know, big bright light, it shouldn't be noticeable.
No, that's why, that's why, just, that's why, just, get their head out. Alright, there's nothing further?
Uh, just to add to that, sorry, I'm, I'm always the quiet one, right? Um, I understand all that, I love the lights and I love all the people that follow the rules and we can all agree. Actually, down on the charter boat side last year, I did see a truck and, uh, I think it was an R V and a trailer go all the way around that corner and I was kinda curious how they were gonna get out of there, but, uh, you know, of course, bypass all the signs, which didn't seem to have any effect, uh. You know, uh, you know, a lot of cities have a municipal code, I guess that's what this is going under for some of this, but you don't have a municipal court, so that doesn't apply. So I guess, uh, the ordinance goes to state court, I would guess, maybe circuit, but even the deputy didn't really have a clear understanding of that. And Newport, South Beach, they use private contractors and that goes to civil, or basically goes to, you know, you basically go to small claims or, uh, goes against your civil court, so I, you know, I'm just kinda curious on how it all works, because if, if it's not being enforced, then there's gonna be a, a large share of people that don't believe it, it applies to them, unfortunately.
Yeah, right.
Welcome to our world.
Yeah.
The port of Newport, when, when I talked to, uh, one of the higher ups down there, he told me that the reason they can have tickets written down on the port is because they have a way for the, the attraction to be disputed.
Right, it goes, it goes to small claims, so it's not considered uniform traffic citation, it's, it's kind of an interesting process, you'll see some cities have the same thing. Right, it goes, it goes to small claims, so it's not considered uniform traffic citation. It's, it's kind of an interesting process. You'll see some cities have the same thing with parking enforcement. For example, Albany, Oregon is called Parkwise. It's actually a nonprofit. So everything goes in and it really goes against your credit or some type of civil forfeiture, but it doesn't go through a court, court of law, so that's another alternative. I know that means an employee, but I, and if you've been to the port of Newport or South Beach, they're, they're pretty, they're on top of it. They are really, they are armed, at least with tasers and all over the place. I think they got a full-time job.
Yeah.
About four, one for each end.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Ideally, the port of Newport, you're talking about probably 200 parking spots opposed to our 20.
Well, they also with the Embarcadero, they also, so they not only have South Beach, they have Embarcadero and, and it's quite a, you know, they, they seem to have it down, speaking from the outside, for the poor people even hearing fishing off a dock. I mean, they're, they're all over it and and that's, you know, what they're paid to do. I get that. I just, I'm trying to understand what the long-term solution is, unless I see a municipal court come into Depot Bay, it really doesn't benefit to cite them because it doesn't go to our court anyway, and even the deputy wasn't sure. He was unsure what citation to issue. And yet he's yet to issue one anyway, so it doesn't really apply.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You've answered one of my questions, I guess, about parking on Shell Road, so I mean, it's filled up almost every weekend, parts all down the road.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you have new apartments, so that's gonna probably decrease parking on that road?
Yeah, it's a little decreased, yeah.
I, I came out here a couple of Fridays ago. I was here at six and they were backed up to the highway. I forget, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's always been a, been a problem and we've looked into, actually at one point that the city looked into buying a lot, where those houses are for parking and that, that didn't come about, didn't come to fruition, so.
Okay.
And there's, there aren't many places that the city can look at that would be convenient for, for somebody towing a boat.
My solution is, okay, I'll drive my boat over, launch it, tie it to the dock and drive home, which is about eight minutes away, but then my wife has to drive me back at five in the morning. She wasn't happy. So next question is, how did you decide on the fees for the kiosk? Ten dollars. I mean, that's more than Newport, but you offer less.
Yes. Because we are the world's smallest one.
It's off, skip and jump to the.
And there aren't.
That's what I was told.
Newport charges nine and they have five or six boat wash stations and lots of parking.
There, there was, a lot went into it. A part of it was, we had two different fees for one thing. We had for motorized craft was we bumped it up from five to 10 bucks and then we had the non-motorized for $5 and then the decision was made, not by the commission, but maybe, maybe we recommended to city council that we just charge a flat $10 fee for every craft, regardless of whether it's motorized or not.
Kayaks are the same, yeah?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't know that. I just, I just thought they were fine still.
No.
Okay, so is there in the future, are you planning to put any boat wash stations in so you can rinse your motors and you can pull your boat?
Uh, and right, right now, that is not on our agenda.
We don't have an infrastructure set up down there for something like that, is the main thing. So the amount of resources and the cost to put it in, I don't see it as being a thing as of right now. That's something that can be discussed earlier on, something that'll be, need to be budgeted through and goes with the ring board to make sure we have all our you know, D's crossed and I's dotted to make sure that we have the right thing, but also just the amount of maneuverability around, down there makes it applicable, so. They create a model map, you know, if there's just, there's not enough ring to maneuver, get in and get out.
Yeah, I love launching here. A quick ride out, a quick ride back.
That's why it's, because our ten.
Five extra dollar of no washing.
Right, maybe.
Okay.
Ways for something was.
Yeah, there's nothing else? I'm sorry. Alright, this meeting, the mid-29th meeting of the City of Depot Bay Harbor Commission is adjourned at 6:54. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate all the input and the comments and we'll deal with.
Good night.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good luck.